I'll go ahead and call the people to order people to rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium to enter name and address for the clerk's record and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Leesky?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Camper? Fritz?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hans?
Here.
Alright, first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes on March seventeen, twenty fifteen.
Move approval.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please dispense the votes. Clark, did you want to vote?
Oh, sorry.
Voting in favor of the motion, Leesky, Beck, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans, motion heard.
Okay. Item number two, this is consideration of consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please dispense the votes.
Voting in favor of the motion, Hans, Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Beck, Leesky, motion heard.
Alright. Item number three, public hearing at seven P M., consideration of amendment to Article thirty pertaining to the aviation overlay district of the Seward Unified Land Development Ordinance. Lee John Hughes is here to present.
At this time, we'd like to bring forward Mr. David Potter to consulting J D O. Mayor, members of council, David Potter, J D O Consulting Group, twenty-seven hundred Fletcher, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm here this evening to present the updated Article thirty of your zoning ordinance, which deals with the aviation overlay district. You currently have an Article thirty in your zoning ordinance, however, because of L B one forty that was passed and adopted back in September of two thousand thirteen, there is some need of some updates. And in short, it increases the approach zone from a three mile approach zone to ten miles. And all municipalities and counties that have an airport jurisdiction within their E T J or appropriate jurisdiction has to update their airport regulations. So although it does not affect the city of Seward greatly, it does affect the northeast quadrant, I believe, out into your two mile zoning jurisdiction, as the approach zone now is extended in that direction. It's more importantly going to affect the county. And we have had contact on Seward County to update their airport overlay district as well, and will be hopefully working with them in the near future. I state that because both sets of regulations need to be consistent because they're recognizing the airport authority and the city of Seward in combination with that. So the regulations before you are somewhat typical of what we are presenting to other communities and counties. It does fit within your current outline of your zoning ordinance. So the amendment there with all the appropriate definitions and diagrams fulfill the requirements of the L B one forty. So I believe they went to the planning commission, they recommended approval of that. We are referencing a particular map. It is the airport zoning map prepared by the Nebraska Department of Aeronautics for the Seward Municipal Airport, drawing number Z N S W T dash oh nine, and it was created on March twelfth, two thousand fourteen. The Department of Aeronautics is still generating maps for this ten mile extension with a lot of the airports. So it has been an overwhelming process, not only for the municipalities and the counties, but for the departments. I believe that there is a second item that will come before you, maybe at your next meeting. And that is an update of your overall zoning map. And that zoning map will include this overlay district onto the map as it currently is stated within your zoning ordinance. So with that, mayor, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
I mean essentially, we have nothing. If this is coming from L B one forty, there's really nothing we can do about it, is there? Or were there items in there?
I'd like to say that there's a lot of things you can do, but yeah, you're exactly right. There was the energy element that came through with L B nine nine seven and this particular bill that really forces the municipalities and the counties to do that. L B nine nine seven, an energy element, I believe you've got that all adopted already, that came before the council, so.
So did L B one forty have a timeframe once you said to be implemented?
It needed to be implemented as soon as possible. And that's why I stated the fact that the Department of Aeronautics is still generating some of those maps. Matter of fact, we just got one for a community. So even though the bill was passed back in two thousand thirteen, it's kind of hard to adopt regulations when the maps are not generated. And so we moved as fast as we could with the city of Seward as soon as we were able to get that information. Yes, we're in compliance and unfortunately, it's mandated by the state.
Unless there are any other questions or comments from the council, I would entertain. I guess I'd ask someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, by amending Article thirty A V, Aviation Overlay District, and to provide for the effective date hereof. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero six, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Hans, Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Beck, Leesky, motion heard.
This is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero six. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. The question is, should ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero six be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Schmidt, Hans, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Beck, Leesky, motion heard.
This is the only ordinance that we're asking you to pass this evening, so I'll need one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans, Leesky, back, motion heard.
Thanks, guys. Item number four, consideration of awarding bid for twenty fifteen or newer ambulance for the Seward Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department. Alex and Connie are here to present.
Hi, guys. Connie Langley, Rescue Lieutenant, twenty-nine eighty Holdred Road, Seward.
I'm Alex Monley, Rescue Captain, Seward Fire, eleven forty-five Eighth Avenue, Fair Surfer.
We got three bids that rolled in for the squad. The one O S H that rolled in didn't have what we were looking for, or specifics on it, so we kind of tossed that one aside. And we got a bid from Braun, which is what her current rescue squad is, and it's two years old, and it's running really well. We actually got a discount on that since we bought a squad from them, like a forty-three hundred dollar discount. So that also included all of our items that we asked for, our extra items, and it came under our budget of two hundred fifty thousand. So we presented that to the fire department, and everybody kind of looked at the specs, and that's what we were looking at going towards. The other bid was from our rescue when they were over budget. And the change, the one change that was in the specs was they went with a twenty sixteen Ford instead of a twenty fifteen because it's going to be almost a year before they get it built, so they went with a twenty sixteen Ford truck. Guys, any questions on that?
Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I'd say it is basically the same as the other one.
Yeah, it's pretty much identical to ninety-nine. That's two years old. Like I said, that truck has been running really well for us, so we've had some really good experience with it.
Any other questions or comments, or was it entertain a motion?
So move.
We have a motion to award the bid for this. Could you describe this particular vehicle?
Twenty sixteen Braun XL.
Okay. You have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of motion, Beck, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans, Leesky, motion heard.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We're going to pass over to the five at this time until the presenter hopefully is able to make it before we adjourn. So we'll go to item number six. This is a presentation and discussion of Civic Center North Project. I believe in his capacity as chamber director, Charles Listgus, is presenting here for us this evening.
Alright, I'll present to you from up here, so there's no confusing my role as councilman and chamber director. Alright, as you saw in your packet, what we are asking for is granting the mayor the authority to sign a pre-application for the twenty fifteen Civic and Community Center Financing Fund. The reason that this is an important component of the plan, as you read, right now, we've got the old Jones Bank building that is vacant adjacent to the Civic Center. And they have been attempting to market that building and have not accepted any offers to sell that building. And we had some conversations with Steve Poots about how we might be able to bring that building and that land in so that the Civic Center would have the whole block. And Steve, in managing the will and the trust, feels like it's within his authority to purchase land and to build buildings and to maintain buildings, but not within his authority to purchase an existing building. And so as we thought this over, we looked at the county assessor site for that. The total property is worth approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, with the land having a tax value of about eighty-three thousand, and then the building being the rest of it. So what we proposed is, could the trust take ninety thousand dollars and purchase the land if the building was a dimension? And we would have to work out the details of how that would all look in a purchase agreement. But he felt comfortable that that would work. And so we approached Jones Bank and talked with them about the possibility of making that building part of the Civic Center complex. And when we talked to them about the plan of this financing fund, that's a matching fund. So if the trust were to pay ninety thousand dollars and we got the matching grant for ninety thousand dollars, that would be a hundred and eighty thousand that could go to Jones Bank. And they are willing to entertain a deal where they would take that one eighty and then donate the remainder of the value of the building. And so at this point, we don't really have, have to get into a lot of the specifics on how all the mechanics of it would work. We just have between April fifteenth and May first is our deadline to get this grant pre-application in. If they approve our grant pre-application, then they'd ask us to submit a full grant, and then we'd get into more of those details. But you were emailed out an early version of what that grant pre-application was. It's just a single page. We've gone through and wordsmithed it a little bit and cleaned up a little bit of grammar in that, but content wise, it's the same. And that would be the staple sheet that we gave you earlier. We talked with Gene Coulterman today, who's the chair of the Civic Center Commission, there in support of this. She said that they had actually approached Steve Poots at one point about purchasing that property and couldn't figure out how to make it work within the confines of the trust and the will. But she was excited about that. Had a great conversation with Mike Hecker from Jones Bank, and they indicated they want to keep talking further. They're on board for doing something for the city. Talked with Steve Poots again this afternoon, and he's still on board with moving forward at this point, so. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council?
So the plan is to maintain the building or dispose it?
Yeah. No, the plan would be to keep the building. So if we get this matching grant and are able to move forward, the vision is to have the Chamber of Commerce offices move from the current Civic Center into this Civic Center North building. And then where they're going to add the wheelchair ramp that's going to take part of my current office, and where our current offices are could be re-configured into meeting rooms. And then half of the Langworthy Gallery right now is filled with the visitor information, with the maps and all that kind of stuff. So the visitor information things would move into that North building as well. And the Langworthy Gallery would have all their room, and we'd have the additional meeting room space that they're requiring in the Civic Center. And then as far as, you know, you need a new roof or new windows or other things come up, the trust could take care of that with the current relationship there with the Civic Center Commission and the city in those same ways. You know, eventually, a later phase down the line, we might even see those buildings connected. I know that's something Steve had mentioned. As they widen Highway fifteen, there's probably a good chance that they're going to close that east driveway anyway. So if we connect with the buildings, we could expand the parking lot on the other side of the tension.
And this will, future maintenance of it will be by the trust, or is it going to come back to the city?
I think the way it works now is the city pays for the maintenance, they submit that to the trust, and then they're reimbursed by the trust. So as long as the property would transfer over with the same covenants that the current Civic Center ground has, so that it's within what the trust is requiring for restrictions, then that relationship would continue.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Unless I entertain a motion under six A, which is consideration of submitting the Civic Center, excuse me, a Civic and Community Center Financing Fund pre-application for the Civic Center North Project.
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of motion, Hans, Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Beck, Leesky, motion heard.
Alright. Item number seven, consideration of voluntary annexation of Web Fourth Edition. John Hughes, go ahead and take this.
Yeah, this is a request for the second reading for annexation, a twenty-four lot subdivision located between Columbia and Star, in between Waverly and Mainville.
Unless there's any discussion, I'll go ahead and.
This is the second reading or the third reading?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
The first meeting we had.
That was the first reading.
But I think we had one last, last, or last meeting was the second.
No, that meeting was the first.
It wasn't the night, the web was here, wasn't that the?
That's the first.
First. That wasn't the last meeting, was it?
Yep.
I don't think so.
Let's check real quick for you.
I'll pull it up.
I don't think so.
March seventeen was the public hearing, the first reading.
March seventeen, I believe, was the first. Yeah, that was the public hearing evening and the first reading.
So then March twenty-sixth or whatever. No, seventeenth was our second meeting, that's correct.
Yep.
Yeah, so. So we should be okay, but this is our second reading. Is that the understanding?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure.
March sixteen.
The meeting of Web, the meeting of.
I'm stretching that preparation.
What was the meeting before that?
Tom Pfizerian's so much fun, dude.
He attends all these other meetings.
So this is, this will be the second reading, unless there's any other questions or comments. An ordinance declaring the annexation of certain contiguous and adjacent tracts of land, urban and suburban in character, more specifically, the land included in Web Fourth Edition to the city of Seward, to the corporate limits of the city of Seward, Nebraska, and extending the limits thereof accordingly, to describe the real estate to be annexed and its boundaries, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. That concludes the second reading. Move on into item number eight, and this is the capital projects update. John?
Yeah. Under administration, we had preparation materials for a tax hearing that will be happening on April fourteenth. Updated the TIF application forms upon streamlining the application form. We're beginning the budget process. We handed out a request for C I P information yesterday. Lease of two two-tower mowers, one for the rep, one for the street department, that should be delivered this week. Building department, we finished up the plan view on Union Bank Rock Church. We're updating the Unified Land Development Ordinance and started work on the TIF project for Michael Lewis's, St. Paul's. St. Paul's Paint, St. Paul's. Street department, we had motor grader training last, on April first. Spring cleanup was last Friday, or Saturday, actually. Electric department is testing load controls, working on mapping updates, water, wastewater, soft road repairs completed. New pumps ordered for raw electric stations, slugs load outdoor projects completed, and we started on pool repairs in the summer. Police department, they should be getting their three new computers this week, all set up. And then they ordered two police cars that were approved in the current budget. A total of four vehicles involved. We're trading in three, getting back two. This will reduce the police fleet by one vehicle, and will reduce the city's overall fleet by one vehicle.
Any questions or comments for John? Yeah, John?
Are you going to put signs on these new electric cars?
Yes, I will be in order.
Okay. It'd be nice to see when they're driving around town and who they're representing.
Oh, you mean the sign that says like department?
Sure.
Yeah, we got, we got around one, we're putting the new ones on. We ran out of new ones.
And which departments are using them?
Electric department's using one of them, and the building inspection department's using them. And they're very nice, you didn't hear that.
As I saw, that's.
The creeper crawl.
It'd be nice to understand what they are to cities.
John?
Yeah, Dick?
That fiber optic cable, wasn't that supposed to be two blocks, either the directions were cord out? Who pays for going down to Key Brothers and?
They do.
Key Brother, okay.
Yeah, we're just doing the ring. They still have to pay for the hookup to it.
Okay.
We just get closer. Just get a little bit closer for them.
Yeah. Lot closer than behind the pizza hut.
And great minds are making a well of deal. Hey, John, can we expect anything, and in my head, I'm referencing our web development discussion? Anything related to Union Bank, Rock Church, or this TIF project? That's going to come here, things that have to be discussed, anything out of the ordinary?
So far, there's nothing out of the ordinary on the Union Bank or the Rock Church. TIF project will come to you. The TIF project is for, it's putting up a new warehouse across the street from Birdsaw.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of motion, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans, Leesky, motion heard.
Item number nine, feature requests for council agenda items or administrative action. John?
Yeah, I have a request that we, our current agenda paper that we request items to put on the council, we're not following what we say on that agenda. Because it says on there that we are supposed to be submitted by noon preceding the council meeting. We're not following what we say that's on that paper. We're following the state requirement of what, twenty-four hours?
Yeah.
So I think we need to be, bring that into the council so we get approval because if somebody's putting something on the agenda, we should be following what's on our request form. And then also, I'd like to put on there that we do the current wording that we have, but also add on there then the flexibility to staff twenty-four hours before the council meeting. That way, if there is, say, a S D L that comes in, special dozen liquor permit, or some other, like a wedding or something comes in, they have a little bit of flexibility to adjust that, but I just think we need to have that come from the council, so we're following what we say.
Okay. Thanks, John. Is there any other requests for future agenda items, administrative action? Seeing none. Item number ten, we have several announcements. We have the twenty fifteen Arbor Day celebration, and this is at Independence Landing Thursday, April twenty-third, twenty fifteen, at one P M. We also have Course of the Four, Fourth of July celebration, which will be on the Fourth of July this year. We also have, we have National Library Week coming up. So on Saturday, April eighteenth, from ten A M. to two P M., there, this is at the east of the library in that parking lot. There'll be like, looks like a bouncy house and a bouncy slide, as well as a number of activities as part of this free festival for the National Library Week. And then also, on Tuesday, April fourteenth, from five thirty to six thirty at the library, there'll be a meet and greet, and this is with the library board, friends of the library, library staff, and library foundation. There'll be free pizza provided by the friends of the library. Charles, did you have anything from the chamber? Are you good?
No.
Okay.
If you want me to try and tackle number five, I went to the Fourth of July committee.
Well, let's do this real quick.
I was just going to ask if we need to table that one, or Charles is going to handle it.
If you want to handle, otherwise, I was going to take about a five minute break and call Clark and see if he's close.
Okay, yeah, we can take.
Just give you, so I'll conclude the announcements for number ten. So let me give him a quick call and see. So we're just kind of staying at ease here for a few minutes while I try and.
No, both of you was going to present on that. He just got out of the hospital. And Chief Bolden was our backup presenter. He ended up coming out of town. Clark's there, cleared strings.
Supposed to be heading this way, right? Um, Charles, did you kinda wanna give anybody a little overview and then Clark can join you when he gets here?
Yeah, you wanna go from up there?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
All right, so I will address you in my capacity as an attendee of the last Fourth of July committee meetings. Um, each year, there is a kids carnival as a component. Um, we've done it over here by the Civic Center in the past and we've done it over, um, by where Betty's Punch used to be, the youth center in that area. They are anticipating that they're gonna be doing construction on the Union Bank that's going on the corner right across from the youth center. And, um, so that's not an appropriate location, um, this year and I don't know, it might work out in the future. But, um, the particular carnival that's coming has, um, like some bumper car ride that needs quite a bit of room. And so they've arranged with, um, Richard Goke to use the pavement, um, behind Fast Martin on this side of the white building. And then the talk is to put the rest of the carnival kind of in front of the Civic Center so that it's, it's closed. 'Cause as I understand it, we can't block the doors of the city, um, building that's over here with all the big trucks in it. So, that's what I know about it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Do you mean from the public wish to comment on this item? Yeah, go ahead and come at the podium and state your name and address for the, the record, please.
Here, I'm Lois Kimsey, three oh five North Seventh, right on the corner of it all. And once again, I do object. So the carnival will be put out there on my corner for about three different reasons. One, to me, it distracts from the Civic Center, 'cause that's a beautiful place, it's kept up very nicely. Plus they put three porta potties out there on the corner, which is very distractible. And the main thing is this year, I drive for Arrow Stage Line, and I'm bringing two big motor coaches in the night before to escort the World War II vets around town on the Fourth. And they have to stay by my house so that I can kinda keep an eye on them, 'cause they won't let us park them just anywhere 'cause of things might happen to them or something or other, so they have to stay parked on the south side of my house there. I figured that's probably the easiest place to park them. So I have to be able to get them in there. 'Cause as you very well know, they're big dudes and you just don't back them and pull them in anywhere in a little space. So like I said, I would love to keep that open so that I can get them in there the night before and get them out the next day on it, uh, 'cause like I said, it is for our, our marching vets to be escorted around town on the Fourth to the Harvest Center, to wherever they may wanna go, to the governor's reception, and they will also be put in the parade with, uh, a National Bar Jeep in front and back of the two coaches, advertising that they are full of vets. So I need a little help on that situation as to how to keep that open so I can get them in and out of there.
Any questions or comments from the council? Oh, yes, Dick?
Is, is Seventh Street gonna stay open then?
Um.
Last, last time they had it over there, they had the intersection blocked and it went up Seventh Street as far as the alley. And what I'm hearing, they're gonna have the bumper cars on the Fast Mark lot.
Right.
And the rest would be on Bradford Street in front of the Civic Center.
That's my understanding. I think, I think we have to keep the bays accessible for our, for our equipment, you know?
As long as they don't close Seventh Street. And I don't think.
Yeah, the original request is, um, says front of Civic Center, west to Seventh Street, uh, Seventh and Bradford to Seventh and Jackson to be closed for setup of the carnival rides. Is the description I have of the, on the form.
Mayor, they usually put it in the arch, kind of exit across Seventh Street there, at least they did before when they put it up there. So there was only like room for, to turn a car off of Seventh onto Bradford. But once again, those buses won't turn where a car will turn, so. And I just kinda wondered, do they have the permission of the Civic Center to use their land carnival?
I would guess not. And I wouldn't think they'd be allowed to put anything on the Civic Center property.
Isn't the driveway over from the daycare center the Civic Center's?
Yes.
So are they putting there?
No, not that I understand. They'd be in the street, so. So.
That's, you know, I realize there's not a lot of places you can stick that carnival. Pardon my language, but I'd like to tell them where to stick it, but that's not the point. I apologize for that, but, uh, you know, it, uh, to me, it takes away from the Civic Center. And, uh, to get those buses in, 'cause like I said, they have to stay within my, kinda like eyesight so that they're not parked out somewhere so they can get damaged or something.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Yes.
Is, is it possible to carve out an area of this, but in agreement with the carnival operator, to ensure that she has access? Do you still have enough room for the carnival?
Yeah, I, I'm kinda like.
I think you just keep Seventh Street open.
They, that they can.
And they can.
And it make it clear to the carnival in our.
Right. And I, and I think Richard Goke would let them put some more stuff on that lot to the south of the white building.
Probably so.
Because he's not gonna have anything in there, so.
Wait, the, the market thing is, is fine, but then you jump across to this, right in front of the Civic Center. Um, Highway fifteen is really busy that day. It just, everyone, it seems that it's always difficult to cross it when, when you're, you know, trying to get to the Civic Center from the other various sites locked down. I worry that if we're going to have a carnival divided and kids going this way, uh, uh, that street gets busy, but it's just a.
They'd only be on the west side of Highway fifteen.
And they could go up the alley to get to it, and you don't have to go, there's a sidewalk there.
And I'm not sure whether there'd be a discussion over food, but I have two food vendors that sets up on the corner of Seventh and Jackson, especially for the car show, because they didn't have access to go down to, to the food alley to get food and stuff. So with, uh, CJ offered them coupons, five dollar coupons that if they turned them in, you know, he raised his price and if they didn't turn them in, then he got the five dollars for the car show stuff, so. I don't know that most of their contracts, they no food within so many feet of their carnival.
Okay. I'm sure we've worked that out with the carnival between the Fourth of July Committee. That, that agreement would be between those entities, not with the city. Because we don't manage the food, we don't manage, the city does not manage any of that. So they'd have to work out that contractually. Uh, is there anything else? Thanks, Lois. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, is the council any other questions or comments? Otherwise I entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it as long as Seventh Street remains open.
Okay.
No second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the carnival's location, um, as long as Seventh Street remains open. Is any further discussion? Seeing no one else, do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
I have a motion, Pike, Schmidt, Hales, and see motion heard.
Thank you. Um, item eleven, this is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, do you register your votes? Charles, you want to go on?
Oh, that would be a good idea.
Play, thank you. Thank you all.
Chris, could you make the motion for your?
Me.